Thank you DJ. Please, I'm going to give you an introduction. I'm going to introduce you. So, I am Roger Niloan. So, we're going to quickly deal with the color mountain of presence. I'm going to quickly, by the torch you guys gave me, run down the list. Ibo, Ibo Nyanabi, representing Abia. Ibo, Yavro for Yehia. Abia, we are quick, we are quick, it's both, it's both. Yemajewa Nambra, eh, what? Nambra. Um, na, eh, what? Nambra. Eh, Nubun, eh, Nubun. Um. Delta. Delta. Imo, just rose. Uguachan, Ibo. Iguachan. We are going to do that. Iguachan, eh, representative of you.
She's ever demanded, it's his flag.
Eh, Boni. Eh, Boni, I'm going to go in a bar. Eh, Do. Iguachan, I'm going to talk about it. I'm going to, um, this is not so many years.
Ikala, Do, Ikala, Do, Ido, Moneda.
Okay, Ikala, Ibo, Na, Na, Gadi, Do. Ikala, Idoma. And well, any other states, can I show? Bia, so it's in the house, on air? Okay. Cross river. Cross river. I am a senior private. Okay, Ibo, Kanyen, Kaya, real quick. This is also, oh, for Yehia. Amande. Azoma. Na, eh, what? Ibo, Na, Nyanji, those are my name, I'm going to Nyanawaka. Oh, Na, this is first, no, don't want to. Why I watch? Oma. Ibo, me, 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 stay, I'm going to watch your house, Na, I'm going to move, can be. Oh, who is there, she got to your house?
I'm going to look at me.
Okay. Okay, Ibo, eh, oh, for you, eh, I'm going to go, no, Nana, Nodhi. My husband's steak, I'm going to show. Ibo, eh, go there, I'm not going to tell you, they can't manage it, insane. God, we, eh, Ajin, Ajin, I'm going to walk on you, Ibo, Kaya, Yehia, Nibo.
IPOB.
One family.
IPOB.
One family.
IPOB.
One family.
One family.
IPOB.
Come on, back to the morning, work, work.
Eh. Chineke. Oh, Basile, eh, Erisa. Oh, Sebru. Elohim. Oh, my, I am. I am going to, eh, Kekan, I'm going to show you what I'm going to do. She, oh, go, several places. Oh, go, eh, Canada. Oh, go, Germany, and parts of Europe. He, eh, I'm going to, eh, Chineke, eh, eh. Yeah, she is believe that, Kacha.
The finest thing in a Biafran, it encapsulated everything beautiful about an Igbo person. Not of Anese, I said Igbo Union that built Aba National High School, do you know that? Do you know that? In fact, it was Igbo National, is that correct?
Yes.
Before they named it. Since that very time, Chukwudikapia Ma'kevose, the feeling light in Mbagwe, Mbagwe came and that light was pretty much always extinguished. And after Mbagwe left, the state has been left bereft of men of ideas, men of conviction, men of very deep intellect and men who can be relied upon in terms of prizes. What we have now are artificial Igbo men, artificial Biafrans, people that find solace in serving people that ought to be serving them. Some of you are here today because now you realize that the Fulani are getting very close to your villages, is that correct? Very glorious. And I ask you, who do you think is going to stop them? Who will stop Fulani from taking over your villages? It's only IBOB, by the grace of God.
Yes, sir.
I said only IBOB can, no other person will. They lack the metal, they lack the stomach and they are not brave enough to confront this very clear and imminent danger that is confronting each and every one of us. I came here in 2015, not too far from the hotel that I'm staying. I told the World Congress then to give me guns and to give me bullets that you in the USA need defending. They did not believe me. But today, every organization around the world is looking for IBOB because they have now realized that we have always been right. There is nothing I say that doesn't come to pass. Everything I say comes to pass, I mean everything. It may sound wretched and pathetic to you, it may sound unrealistic to you, it may sound like a joke to you, but in the end it comes to pass. It comes to pass because Chukwudikapia Ma'kevose is sending you a message through us. Some of you will not listen and those that will not listen, your land will fall to the Fulani. Those that fail to listen, they will be cannibalized in the process. Your daughters will be abducted, your mothers will be raped and your wives taken away from you, you are being extorted on a daily basis. The largest checkpoints you have anywhere on earth is in Biafran.
That's right.
There is no federal presence in the land that the oil and gas that sustain the zoo comes from. We are, we have now been reduced to begging for the position of ordinary secretary to government. That is how low we have fallen, that is how foolish we have become due to a combination of cowardice, jealousy, greed, envy and personal. Because the only way that a Biafran, I did not say IBOB man, the only way a Biafran can rise up is by gossiping the brother or the sister to Fulani people, to Yoruba. Those that doubt what we say should have heard what the daughter said yesterday, it was yesterday, wasn't it?
Yes.
They withheld his certificate to the senate, you know, like a little child. He was jumping up and down begging for it, they said, are you willing to condemn your people? He said, yes, please give me the certificate, are you willing? He said, yes. The same man that have spent four years telling you that we should vote for APC in order for Igbo presidency to come in 2023, only yesterday said, there is nothing like Igbo presidency anymore. Am I correct? Unano ya?
I know.
You hear it?
Yes.
There is an Igbo leader.
You know, Koraosotan.
An Awosan man planted in your midst to convince you to turn your brain against IBOB for four years. At last, when he got to Abuja, he declared before the world that his people are irrelevant. They no longer matter in this scheme of things, that everything happened to us, we deserve it and they are your leaders. Before the Fulani man came to kill me, they sought the permission of two people, British government and so-called Igbo leaders. And they gave them the go-ahead to kill me. Yes, Igbo men did, or Anese and your so-called governments. They gave Fulani people permission to come, this year my father, to kill our people. And now I ask you this question, how many times have you heard that a northern governor asked the army to come and kill the Gohan?
None.
As they were busy twisting all of your brains against IBOB and against myself, they were busy preparing for the invasion of our land. You know, you're not hearing about it, some of you here don't know what is happening back home because they deliberately staff you of that very information. This happened during the war, Elubu fell after only three months of the war starting. As we are fighting in Abana, in Orca, in Indonesia, as we are fighting inch by inch, every territory of land in our place. People in Elubu were going to school, are you aware of that? Then we are going to school in Elubu? Yes, because Elubu fell after only three months. People in Elubu did not know what was happening at Othiwe. This is where you are today because all your news media is being controlled by people that don't wish you to be alive, I tell you. Then what you did? There are good people, as with every society, you have the good, the bad and the very ugly. The same way it is over there in the west is how it is in the east. They went through our land conversing for the prescription of IBOB, for the targeting of myself and IBOB as a terrorist entity. But today, I travel more freely than Jubril Asulami.
That's right.
I travel more freely than Gilatay, I travel more freely than all girls who are in charge of the persecution of the innocent. It is you. To let the world know that we're not terrorists, all we are asking for is an opportunity to be free. But the greater burden lies in your hands, all of you, here gathered today. If you want Biafra to come, Biafra will come. If you prefer to be slaves or, it's voluntary slaves in America, because before it was by force, now it's voluntary. If you want to be voluntary slaves in America, you're more than welcome to do so. But understand this very thing, that the more you reside here without fighting to be free, the more you are saying to yourself and to the whole world that you're worth less than an animal. I'm telling you the truth. If you don't have any shame, you'll remain in America, you will not go to IBOB, you will not join us in what we are doing, you will find every excuse that will part of this very great movement. But as one Zulu lawyer said, senior advocate of the zoo, Ozakuma, he said that IBOB's agitation is historic, that the foundations of the zoo is shaking into this part of IBOB, that Fulani have not come into your villages to pick you one by one is because of IBOB, that the zoo, including Yorubas, that they are still living is because of IBOB. But they know how to divide us and they do it very well, perfectly well.
Yes.
I remember it was in 2015 it was, when we were making our overtures to our cousins in the coastal region, especially the Jaws. Tumpo Don went and did a press statement, he's still on mining today, saying that a bigger masquerade like Buari is cutting him, who is N'Kambe. All these things are documented, and you sort of read it online, if you find it, if you look for it. But the same person that he aligned with has been persecuting him and his village that led to the death of his father till this very moment. His village was occupied only last week by the army, again. And that is why I said to them, anytime you work with Fulani, you spend yourself with that nonsense called Nigeria, you will always return in shame. It doesn't matter how long it takes, eventually they will discuss you.
You said it, yeah.
Now, Fulani, they come to Anambra and they kill us because Jubril, or should I say Kabal, led by Abakiari, confirmed, oh, they are not in power for another four years. Now, Fulani can come into Anambra and kill as many of us as possible. The governor that is the chief secretary officer of the state will not say anything. And now I ask some of you here, what is your justification for supporting these people that are against us? Our enemies come all the time to kill us and they do nothing. They went out of their way to ask Fulani to go and kill us in our own land. Some of you talk about the glory times, some of you even go as far as trying to acknowledge them. But there are the source of your problem and they will lead to your destruction because they cannot see. And so we are coming here, it occurred to us, I think there was a dude who reminded us that, that thing that Okman Danfoudio said and the Sadwa echoed, that they will conquer us and use us as they are willing to, willing to survive in this country. That they will conquer us all the way to the ocean. Have you read it? Have you already? And it's now time to fix it and that time is now. You see, I don't believe that the white man is God. I believe that God is Chukwudikapia Ma'kevose in heaven. That the way we are today is as a result of our and today our communities are under siege and they're even too ashamed to acknowledge it. And some of you still refer to Anese as the apex socio-cultural organization. A group they put together for you, I appointed who the leadership should be, tell them what to do and they do it. When it's too late, they turn around and tell you, oh, Nigeria can no longer be won. When did he say it? It was yesterday.
On Friday, yeah, yesterday.
Yesterday.
That's right.
The same man that said that N'Kambe is funding the Embar's war, today he has been announced that Nigeria is unsavable. There's something I told him in the sitting room, he cannot stop the zoo. It is not rocket science. No matter what you do, Nigeria will never love you.
At all, that's true.
It doesn't matter what you do, they will love you. I also said it long time ago, many months ago, that Dino Bu will boot Yorubas into trouble. And today, Yorubas people are now confirming what I told them. Dino Bu's ambition for the presidency will sink Yorubas. And today, Fulani are there, they cannot talk because it's either you fight the Fulani and lose the presidency or you are allowed to take over your land so you can be president. I hope you're following me very carefully. Our fight is to save everybody. My memory about what I'm saying, including Yorubas people, including the TY Kanjuma that fought us during the war. His name is Diopulos, he's a Christian.
That's right.
God is so ashamed, they are killing his people, he cannot longer talk.
He said, he said.
I told them that the zoo, if they don't give us Biafran, if you remember, that Somalia would be better than Nigeria, I said it. Then you know, when you visit and you say this, that's right. And before we leave the zoo, we are going to fight, and we are. You may not like it, but it's the truth because you left it too late, it's your fault. You know that Elohim is very wonderful. The Jews, our cousins in Israel, made this foolish mistake we are making today. Foolish mistake, they left their land, went to foreign lands, built synagogues, as some of you did, you build something in Virginia, is that correct? Igbo village.
Igbo village.
I will go there and destroy it. That means you're not planning to go home again, isn't it?
Yes.
Instead of you to go home and see what is happening, you go to Virginia and see tax houses. You feel good within yourself that you've arrived, you've done something for your people. Whereas you're contributing to extinction, as I guess. The Jews survived because they had their language and their religion. They knew that before they can revive themselves, they need what is called a commonality, one common thread that runs through all of them. If it is not the religion, it is the language. You go to houses here in El-Ele, very affluent, very rich Jews are here. All their children speak Hebrew, do you know that?
Yes.
Do you know why they speak Hebrew? Ndeje esijima tereba, and this is a man they also. Ayenatudun, why never hear Tidu and Man? The reason why he is speaking profans or in Arde is to direct your words so that it will hit the mark, is that correct? I say this to you. Ni mosini is ukamana maji. And I wish you don't forget. In American slang, is that possible? Only that you don't have for me, you know. Is that okay? Am I making any sense here? Is ukamana maji. Inside you is your plan, it stays that way and it works. The Eku Me could have hit that was why they fought the British successfully. In the same way, Neoma today that they said doesn't belong to us, the same elders, intelligentsia, they have, one man have got here, they give you a, elite, they have. Leaders of thought and leaders of stupidity. They abandoned that Neoma, is that Neoma a Hason language? They abandoned it. Some of you don't know that Abraham, in heaven, or has Abraham, who is a local people states, yes? And Awosan, yeah, Fulani here, let me correct myself, came after the war, decided to divide Abraham into three. There is one Abraham in Delta State, one Abraham in River State, one Abraham in Igbo State, listen carefully. The one in Delta, Abraham, the same family, the same people, they are not Igbo. The Abraham in River State is not Igbo, only the one in Igbo. You object for it, you know, Abanit. Instead of you to compete with the Fulani or those actually aggressing you, you want to compete with your next door, your own brother, your own flesh, your own blood. And as you're fighting, the hyena, what, that you run with proof, one-one. You don't want to go and be like the band of the, all you want to do is to impress somebody from next village, the opposite group. The darkest is not your enemy. Your enemy is the Fulani. Because they want you dead, all of you, to take over our land. These hundred billion they have planned to give to Mietiala, where did they get the money from? From where? Is there any oil in Awosan land, anywhere in the Fulani land, anywhere in Yoruba land? As an example, do you know what I'm saying? I ask all of you to do what Anese should have done six, seven years ago, which is a lesson to IBOB and our prescription for curing this very illness afflicting us. Because if you sit and do nothing in LA, Fulani will take over our land. And don't tell me it will not happen, it happened to the Awosan people. It happened to Tidiki. Or maybe, one of these Yuchi, maybe it's what we want. I think so. I think so. Because if we are serious about getting ourselves out of this mess, starting from this very moment, we should make it a point of duty to get everybody around us to believe that our freedom is the only way out, no other way. I read the EU reporter, have you read it, that came out today? About an EU reporter election in the zoo. Did you read it? Who read it here? Was it not very clear that Igbo's were stopped from voting in Lagos, in Abuja, in Kanu? Did they mention it in their report? Did they mention it? It's to let you know that your enemies are more than your match. If you listen to Anese, you will die. If you listen to those God's prophets, you will die. If you listen to their predictions, you will die. There is only one remedy. One, one remedy, not two, not three, not four, one only and it's IBOB. And there is no duplicate, there is no counterfeit in IBOB. If it is not IBOB, it is not IBOB. Because Fulani is replicating everything we are doing to confuse and to convince someone. And when the surprises are here, talking to you, they are raising their children, perhaps to talk somewhere else. Everything we have, they have created it double to confuse you. All the names they called us is today hunting them. The same of Basantela, Obutunotirango, Miss Crass.
Miss Crass.
And Obi, the makeshift, I'm going to Houston, Texas. I want a Biafran t-shirt with Miss Crass written at the back, I want to wear it here. He called us Miss Crass. But today, he agrees with Miss Crass. And then as far as saying that if not for, that the people who are prepared, who only are second hand, the people who are prepared are they?
South East.
And who is South East making that possible?
IBOB.
Oh, yeah?
IBOB.
IBOB.
This is from Basantela, I know something that some of you don't know. Because in those days, as I keep saying in every time meeting that I go to, when my uncle came to US to study, they take up Alosia. On his way back, my grandmother said, they went to their way. Umahebe to their way. You know, I only the red two piece wrapper, not one. They brought out the outer layer, they asked him not to enter into any vehicle, that our young man should not carry him on his head. They placed their wrapper on the floor, on the ground and he was walking until he got his father's company. That is who we are in those days. In those days, if you come first, second or third in your class, it doesn't matter who you are, anybody you see along the road, including a papa in Taba, will give you something because you did well. Because as somebody that grew up in the village and a good woman when a new child is born, you know, here they call it a baby shower. Our baby shower is outside, is that outside? Your grandmother will sing from her village, will start the night for other, is that correct? Along the road, announcing your birth. Now what you like, I don't know what, the whole world will know. Until she gets to the village and then your father's mother or aunt or whoever will take over. And then your father's mother or aunt or whoever will take over. Everybody will rock powder and there'll be joy and gladness. Is that correct? These are some of the values you have lost by coming to America. I'm not saying that coming to America is not good or those efforts that went to England is not good, but it's for you to go and learn something and bring it back home. Only then will the Europeans or the Western world respect you. Japan did it. Today Japan entered here visa free, is that correct? Is that correct? I am sure that Malaysia come here as well with eh, very imminent force. Singapore can come here. There was a time the zoo was written as Singapore. You don't know that? Or is it Dubai or not the rest of them? Ask yourselves this question. Why is it that other parts of the world are growing only Africa, black Africa? Every blessed day is very backwards. The way we reason is very, very bad. And we end up feeling sorry for ourselves every blessed day. And that is why we are here. And I'm making a reason I'm saying it is not burial, okay, okay. Where? If you celebrate death, death will come. Do you know that? Do you know?
Yes.
I wonder if they have to say eh, it will end for my heart. The same thing with death. Ain hapu konkanaga, I don't know how you had job, it's not done that way. Seek the kingdom of heaven first. That kingdom for our own purposes is Beafra. Once you seek Beafra first, every other place will let you get sorrow.
Amen.
Amen. He said.
Then the world can respect us. Humanity can respect Beafra. As I said to them two days ago, I went to a very important meeting. They, they asked me, why do you want Beafra so desperately? That freedom for Beafra means the destabilization of West Africa. And I asked them, who was destabilized when Soviet Union collapsed? They couldn't answer me. I asked them, who, who was destabilized when Yugoslavia collapsed? They could not tell me. Who was destabilized when East Timor was carved out of Indonesia? Who collapsed when Albania and Kosovo became independent? And I said to the man, if nothing happened to Soviet Union, a nuclear power, nothing will happen to us in West Africa. I'm telling you this because this is the argument they prefer at your State Department. You know that Zakaria Mohammed, that's her name, isn't it? That lady? The deputy UN chief. Zernab, thank you very much, Zernab, no sorry, Zernab. Is that Mohammed? Thank you. Do you know that Fulani people are working for the freedom of the Sahawak, is this? My goodness, I can't even pronounce it.
Sarawahi.
Sahara, is that correct? Imagine Abuji talking about self-determination. And it's public, they're not hiding it. They said, we will do everything within our powers to make sure that those Fulanis there, that they are free, they have their own country. And then they go and they convince Ikembe Madha to attack IBOB, asking for your freedom. The freedom to control your destiny, your own resources, is your own land. The freedom from being killed every blessed day in the north. I don't have any projector. We should, the wolf, everything. Come, come, container for animal, I'm so sorry. They died on the spot. And somebody said, why? It's not just the Jew. It is the way that black people reason. It's not the fault of Nigeria. If in nineteen forty-five, when they killed us in, in Joss, the first kill was in Joss, another time, we have Nambyazik you where one of the Muslim intelligent gifted everything. Eh, who nineteen forty-five, nineteen forty-seven, nineteen fifty-three, nineteen fifty-nine, consisted killing after killing after killing after killing. And to think they will love you. I don't understand it. Who said so? Failure to curtail them then is what you're witnessing today. And they said we should submit our double barrel. Have you seen their videos, where they are taking their wives and their children and how to shoot their people, tell me? Have you seen it? Did Ikembe Madha call for the arrest? Did our Anese call for the arrest? Did the people of us call for the arrest? They just because I came here to tell you to prepare for what is to come. They said I should be killed. And you know Fulanis are very clever. Because the British advise them what to. Every time they know that IBOB is not behind you, you are gone. They disgraced all of them. The only person they found experience to give something to is Serapha Khalid. Why? Because they know IBOB is in here. You know Fulanis, I still. They have looked at all of them. Without IBOB support, we are nothing. Absolutely nothing. That is why all of you here that are today must rise up and do the needful. What is that did for? Not only are you going to join IBOB, some, not everybody will wear their monthly, some will sell their houses. Because when it happened to the Jews, they were begging for a land, they were begging for their sheep, the Exodus, to, to allow them to talk. They were begging. It is, it is up to you. When you are sitting at a room, a gese, it's up to you to support the emancipation of your people if you like. I can't beg you. Beafra doesn't belong to me. Does not belong, in fact, my village and my father is the gese, doesn't even belong to him. It's for you to do with as you please. If you want to be slaves for life, that's entirely up to you. But as for me and this very family of IBOB, we have chosen freedom. And that freedom must come. That freedom must come. That freedom must come. How many Americans are passionate in the zoo? How many white Americans are in the zoo collecting their pension? Eh? You know, in Germany, as an African, oh my, is it not, don't you think it's time to go home? Am I correct? You have your passport home. Very soon, is it, don't you think it's time to to go home? I don't know how some of you live in this share. It's so immediate. We believe in life after death. And if after this life, you succeed in making it to heaven, that is assuming that you did not consider the good will aware whilst you're there. You make it to heaven. And they say to you, all that oil in my heart, the black and white smuggling in their brain, all the gold in our Africa, all the oil in whom we are and that label, all the oil you have in your gut, all the oil, the gas you have in your heart. What do you do with it? You say, oh eh, Fulanis came to this. Eh? Okay, I'll direct you to her. Now, they are just now an apple here, he makes everything like that. God in heaven, give you a kiss and Fulani will be for you. Everybody wants to be recognized and acknowledged. If it means going to their houses, knocking door to door, you go and notify them that Beafra is coming. And let me also make it very clear. You know, you know, I'm a light from Unumaka. Eh? I said it before, man. Um, what I'm saying, I'm probably, you know, I start one. You don't know that? Eh? It's not good to stay without enemies. You don't know that? Your body, if you give birth to a child, that child doesn't suffer from child-borne illness of any sort. No headache, no malaria, no nothing. The day disease will come, that child will die now. Because the immune system is not trained to handle trouble. So every time that IBOB is a bit lazy, I start trouble somewhere. So every day we do the immune system, isn't it? Every blessed day, if there is no trouble, we start one. Nothing dominates the people more than trouble. True or false?
True.
What did the land do to Africa, is Africa not do for the food? Oh, here I am in Africa. Eh? Maybe nah, them by my son, I'm saying nah, okay, I do, I don't think enough. In Japan, what I'm doing, it's in a microwave. That microwave, I'm trying to find it. Beafra people don't love you. What we are asking for is not a Beafra for man become another person. It is your Beafra. It belongs to you, your own land. Some of you, by the time you go home next time, your village may not longer exist. Unless you rise up today to support us, the Fulani will take over our land. And all the people that you call your elders or your leaders or intelligentsia or elites or leaders of thought will be no way to be found. Because it was Fulanis that appointed them of them. How many of Fulanis people come to your land to come and collect power? They all own them that the only way you can climb into office is by casting aspirations against your own people. By then grating the wrong people, by insulting them before Fulanis people. As eh, Abou Awasa have just done and many more like him. Does anyone hear from Giga these days? Giga? Mohammed! You are begging Fulanis, oh please, we beg you, give us a ticket to the government. And the latest it was announced that Obonayon, their favorite slave from Igbo, is now the secretary to the government. Do you know why they did that? So when they go to Europe and they say that man, they can't know and this, I think that is talking also about eh, anyway, I won't say much. Happy to now, I was loving him. Your land is gone. We, we only need this much forever, maybe eh? What is the best bet? Maybe eh, is it? Of course. The same thing happened in Canada, surprising me, I'm shocked now. The same day, the press have people here in this city. It was five years ago. I'm telling you again today. If you don't take time, Beafra will be gone. But with your help and the grace of Almighty, Beafra will restore in our time. IBOB! 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 One family! Namroshum. Okay, eh, right now, we only have right about thirty minutes for question and answer section. Please, if you have any question, just go straight to your question. We don't want comments, I don't have enough time. Be gone. Go straight to the question. Moment, just we're busy too long, everyone, we can entertain as much question as possible. Be gone. Okay, be gone, um, I'll go on email question, um, definitely this side, the first person and the man goes forward. If you have your own question, if you ask your own question, you go sit down the next person, please. Um, should we do it five at a time or should we go one at a time? One at a time, okay. All right.
Ah, mas, nekalek maka okunki, unle. Nekalek maka okunki, unle ni kini ayen. Am nasika, kileki, koseki, nambo, ni le, eho na, Beafra, ono unye. Ah, ambo, ni ayen, chuku, Sunday. Ah, abon eh captain, na US Army. Ah, you, I do tell you, monka. Ome eh stages, kunu na work with, eh, before, na Beafra be here, eh, may realize. Because right now, just thinking that eh, stage, I'm not even able, eh, make a good work, ma.
Um, thank you very much. You, you have a really question, but it was the way you put it. I was saying, unye, unu. Did you say unu? Or say I need to unu? What is a very dangerous law in the question, I'll say it was seen. Because I went to the Israeli parliament and met some Israeli lawmakers. Please listen carefully. And they gave me an appointment to come back and went back and they started telling me that the reports they got from the zoo, God Nigeria, is very distressing. That they said I killed two guards in prison and I jumped over the wall.